Just on 10F, the total for payroll should read $2,995,715.43. For some reason, the... Forty-three cents. It, uh, the total wasn't accurate, but the actual, um, on the consent calendar, all the numbers are accurate, it's just that the total number wasn't reflected correctly.
I need to speak. I'm a parent of one of the children up at Thurston, as we all know. On Monday, bullets were found on campus. That gives me and fellow parents a certain level of concern, but obviously, we know the state and country where we live in and things like that need to be addressed. We're more concerned about the still unexplained delay between the two bullets being found on Monday and the first official public announcements to parents that was made late in the day on Wednesday by the principal of Thurston Middle School. It seems to an observer that the announcement was made when it could not have been made, when it was no longer possible to not address this situation. We feel that a lot of work needs to be done, not only with regard to safety at Thurston, but with regard to communication about safety issues concerning the students there. I'm aware that at other campuses or parts of the district, there is a safety committee, but that apparently there is not a safety committee associated with Thurston. I think, in addition to some form of town hall, some way to engage the parents of Thurston Middle School students as a group, rather than Foursquare, or TikTok, or whatever the app is that they use in order to push out the little press releases, I think in addition to that town hall, having some sort of formal parent-engaged safety committee would be a great addition. I think that's very much within your remit, and I hope you would consider it today at this meeting.
Is there any other public comment on non-agenda items? Then we'll move to our reports.
Hello. So, last week, we had the Great Shakeout, which is the California earthquake drill. This month is Anti-Bullying Month, and to raise awareness, is B has been working to educate on the reality of bullying. And across the schools tomorrow, students are going to wear orange to show unity against bullying. At El Moro Elementary, they have their Character Counts Week, where they are recognizing and highlighting the traits of trustworthiness, respect, fairness, responsibility, and citizenship. Also at El Moro, they have Boo Blast this Friday, which is the Halloween carnival from 2:30 to 7:30. Tomorrow, at Top of the World, is Walk to School Day, and at Thurston Middle School, students participate in their first off-campus hike for PE. The career talk this week, which I mentioned before, is from an airline pilot, and their TMS talk is on overcoming fear. These talks are a great way for students to learn in other areas besides just academics. And that's all. Thank you.
We have our LBS, LBHS student athletic representatives. They're organized? Okay.
And we just wanted to let you guys know about our trip, and thank you for allowing us to go on it. So, the first thing we did was visit Little Falls, which is actually, it's a town in Minnesota where our coach, Lawham, grew up in, so it was really cool to go there. We visited the high school, we met some high school kids there, and the boys and girls got to go on a run together around the town.
So, in the actual race, varsity took sixth place, and we had two guys placed in the top 10. The race was very different than what we usually get to experience out here. It was very rainy, very muddy, something we don't see in California too often. And after the race, we had so many other teams coming up to us, just wanting to get to know what California's like, so it was very great to meet people from another state.
Varsity girls took third place, and JB took second place. So, of course, we were in very challenging weather, and we actually met a team called Alexandria, and we traded t-shirts, and it was a really fun bonding moment with, like, completely quarantine. Oh, yeah, this is on it, sorry. Okay, so, um, we also went to the Mall of America, which is the largest mall in America. So, we bonded and got to explore the large mall. It's crazy big. We went, there's a, like, there's a theme park, sorry. And we went on roller coasters, and we shopped for accessories and more.
After the race, the next few days, we drove to the University of Minnesota, and we stayed there for two nights, and that was a really cool experience, because it was cool to see, like, what that college is like, and what maybe a typical Midwest university setting is like, especially for the upperclassmen, like, who are starting college apps around now. And a few kids took the ACT even while we were there, so it still allowed us to maintain our academics even while we were gone.
So, overall, we just wanted to, like, let you know about our trip, and just thank you for letting us go. Oh. I'm a senior, Morgan Polkowski.
Oh, I'm a freshman, I'm Nina Rogers.
Mateo Bianchi, I'm a junior.
Logan Brooks, I'm a senior.
Um, I don't know for sure. I...
Oh, yeah, I know the whole race.
A lot of, a lot of the teams, the race got, like, canceled for a little bit because of the rain, so a lot of the teams, like, left, and then they started the race.
Yeah, they kind of gave us, like, a five-minute heads-up that the race is back on.
Oh, it was mostly just from Minnesota, from the town, yeah. So, we were, like, the only people from California, so.
Did you meet Mr. Lawham's family? Does he have family there?
Uh, yeah, 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 we met with his parents.
Oh, my gosh, that had to be great.
And his wife's parents.
That's great. Thanks for sharing. That's really great, you guys. I appreciate having you here.
So, I'm Jack Crawford, I'm a senior on the football team.
I'm Lucas Scholffenig, I'm a junior on the football team.
And I am Sam Raturazi, a senior on the football team.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Matthew Gallegos, and I play for Laguna Beach High School's football team during the summer. The whole team had a unique experience. We were honored to go to the East Coast and play a football game to learn about our nation's, um, nation's history and bond as a team. This once-in-a-lifetime trip left an indelible mark on us all. Thank you for the opportunity to share our experience with you.
Well, our first thing today, or the first thing that we did, was we toured the National Mall. We visited the Smithsonian Museum, and we all took a team picture. We went, uh, we split up and went to the Natural History Museum and the, uh, History Museum of American History, you know, just to get a bit of education in besides all the fun.
And then, we were lucky enough to get up and close with the Capitol Building and take a nice team photo in front of it. It's crazy to see how big this building actually is in real life compared to just in photos.
Uh, and then, later that evening, we went on a nighttime tour of all the memorials. So, we visited the Jefferson Memorial, the Lincoln Memorial, the Korean War Memorial, the Vietnam War Memorial, the World War II Memorial, all of them absolutely fascinating, and just to learn about how they were built, what their purpose is, and kind of how it relates to our nation's history. Also, I think what all of our greatest honors were, was to go to the Arlington National Cemetery. Us four, we got to lay a wreath at the Tomb of the Unknown Soldier, which, you know, truly takes your breath away. I mean, when they start playing taps, and you just think about the great sacrifice that everyone made, left not only a, uh, a mark on all of us, by the entire football team especially, and you know, that honor was just, you know, unlike anyone that we've ever had.
So, not only did we go to Washington City and Maryland, we went to New York City, and we visited the Statue of Liberty. We went to the 9/11 Memorial and went through the museum, which was really heartbreaking to watch. There's people crying all over, but it gave us a good understanding of what happened, because it's almost like, we weren't born yet, so we didn't, we don't know the full thing, and so that gave us a lot of knowledge about what happened. And we also got to just go, our hotel was actually in Times Square, so we got to walk around there and see what was, what it was like in the Big Apple. And that's all. Thank you so much for letting us go.
Thank you.
Had any of you been to DC or New York before then?
I have been, yes.
Okay.
New York, but not DC.
We have been.
And how long was the trip? Like, how long were you guys?
Five days.
Five days? That has a lot to do with five days.
Yeah. The people that took us on the trip, KSA, they said we've done the most in a trip that anyone's ever done. We got the most accomplished, so.
It was just part, part of the workout, right?
Exactly, a lot of walking.
And the game?
The game. The game, we won.
It was an awesome game. It started to rain. This happens during games much often.
So, did you have much interaction with that team?
Yeah, very nice.
Other than on the field?
We talked to them after for almost, yeah, almost an hour, had pizza with them. They were really cool kids, just, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Can I have just one minute?
Sure.
So, they talked a little bit about the company that traveled us, KSA, and they put a book together, and what you saw on the slides is really minuscule compared to what we did in the five days. So, when you get a chance, I think you'll be blown away at how much more we did. And then, you guys asked about the other team. The other team is called Green Street Academy, and they're out of inner-city Baltimore. So, when we were having pizza with them after the game, they shared with us that the only time those kids get out of inner-city Baltimore is for games. So, they drove to St. Mary Reichen, which was a private Catholic, I would say about 45 miles away. I've never seen kids move so fast, and we had the pizza ready for them at the end of the game. I don't think they knew we were going to eat together. It was great. And since that time and that discussion, KSA has partnered with us and asked them to bring, us to bring them out here. So, we're going to do it. It, it was a really, obviously, emotional experience, and, uh, really humbling that our kids, we go to Minnesota, we do that, that these kids were happy to go 45 miles. Coach Shanahan fortunately has lots of NFL contacts, so we are going to reach out through groups like that that do things for communities, and, uh, next, uh, next August 22nd, there will be a, a team here from inner-city Baltimore. So, the boys are just lining up hot as well. We're just kind of...
Will they stay with the families?
You know, we talked about that. The part of the team building is staying with your teammates, so we're going to keep them with their teammates. They'll get in Wednesday night and practice, and we'll have a meal right then. They'll come back and practice Thursday. They're going to go visit UCI. KSA partners with Disney, so they'll go to Disneyland one day while they're here. So, they, they have a four-day trip with, again, they don't, they see big city all the time. They want to see the beach and all of that stuff. So, anyway, uh, we were very, uh, very excited when that all came together. So, you know, KSA sent the book and said, "Here, please do this," and Green Street was really happy. So, without you guys supporting us going on trips like this, this other thing wouldn't be happening for other kids in our country who don't have the same opportunity.
Are our kids fundraising for them? Is that what you meant through the, what?
So, so, did you guys recycle last night after your team meal? They didn't even notice, but we are going to collect some recycling, and then again, John Shanahan threw, he worked at Tustin High for a long time. Tustin High has had a bunch of guys go into the NFL, so that's going to be his first reach. His wife works for PIMCO. PIMCO will help us out in some way, shape, or form. So, we're not going to ask our families internally for any money. We are going to ask our boys to hustle around and recycle and do some of that stuff for us, and then we're going to reach to outside sources who help communities like this. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. We have reports from our bargaining unit representative, Margaret, Mrs. PTA.
Thank you for leaving. First of all, thank administration and board for allowing us, associates, to have a time that we need to really do our pre-negotiations and pre-surveys together. That's really very appreciated. On October 18th, the negotiations came and that's for the day. And using, which we appreciate that Dr. Valaria brought, strength binders, and I'm sure our math members, they do it too, but we're using those skills. And it's interesting, we hope, moving forward even with our IBB, that we will all share each other strengths, so that not one person is over the other person kind of feeling. And we did a really good share-out in coming up with the articles that we feel are necessary. So, I want to share that with you, because it's not just a matter of going and having a meeting and sitting around. It's really using the tools that we've been trained with. So, I appreciate that very much, and thank you. And on that note, I'd like to just say, some people received their programs today, other people have already received them, programs support, our seniors that are classified employees, whether in this district, students going here, or they go to other high schools. So, please support us and have some candy. Thank you.
Yes, we have sent out our survey to our association members, and they are coming in as we speak. So, in preparation for our October 28th meeting, where we will meet and plan together, our topics and any information needed, et cetera, and we hope that, you know, that's for the purpose of setting ourselves up for a productive and efficient negotiation, because for us to be out of our classrooms, there's a cost to that for us. So, we really do appreciate all the planning time and what we've gotten in order to do that. So, we are hoping that things can, you know, move along very productively and efficiently. That's my goal. I'm sure that's all of our goals.
Thank you. We have our school resource officer and friends.
Hey, Board. Happy to see you. I brought my supervisor, Sergeant Jim Cota. He's also our PIO for Laguna Beach Police Department. I just want to first talk about some of the engagements I attended earlier in the past two weeks. The first week, I assisted with drug and alcohol prevention with the, our social-emotional support specialist, Alex Aronson. It was in the health classes, for health classes, ninth and 10th graders at the high school, and we talked about the effects of drug use and alcohol use, peer pressure and how to avoid it. We spoke about the laws pertaining to minors and underage drinking. We spoke about the vaping epidemic and some of the consequences that, you know, kids can face, because they had questions regarding, "What happens if I, you know, got caught, you know, with drugs on campus or being under the influence?" They wanted to know what the consequences administratively could be. It was a Q&amp;A, so there's tons of questions being thrown, but it was a good learning experiences. We talked about myths associated with drug use and alcohol use, and so it was a really informative discussion. You know, the, the teachers, the health teachers, they look forward to further discussions about, you know, this issue, because it definitely affects all of our youths at this age. I attended football game and dodgeball X. That was pretty awesome to see the kids interacting with each other, and I got hit with the ball a couple of times, but, you know, it's, it's expected. I'm looking forward to Walk to School Day. Tomorrow, I'm going to have members of our police department walking kids to and from, uh, to school at Top of the World tomorrow morning, and then Boo Blast, looking forward to that. Going to be working that event, and as well as a football game after, on Friday. And are there any questions, of course, last week, as you're aware of the incident at Thurston Middle School? Were there any questions in regards to that?
What was, oh, thank you. What was reported in the, in the papers and what went out to the parents was very thorough, and I just add to any, to reiterate to anyone that is concerned, I mean, we have such a close interaction with the police department and such support that it's, it's very reassuring, and I would hope that that message gets out to our families, that we get immediate response, and we get very, you know, very thorough investigations. And we don't always know all the details, because that's just how it works.
Yes, releasing all the details can definitely hinder our investigation, but one thing I can say is, to the parents watching, parents here, you know, we work collectively with the school district in unison to ensure the safety of our kids, and, you know, me personally being the SRO, there's no way that I would sleep at night knowing that our kids were unsafe, and I can assure you that we did everything collectively in our power to ensure the safety of our kids, and we're going to continue to do that.
Any other, anyone else have a question? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Very busy.
Thank you.
Board members, Ms. Berry.
Uh, I did attend the school power district meeting, and so we were just discussing the framing and strategies for the year, so it was informative, nothing more than what we had discussed at the trustee meeting.
I didn't attend anything, but I did want to make a clarifying comment. I know the gentleman left that spoke, but that we, via the Brown Act, we can't discuss things that aren't on the agenda, and I just, for, if he's watching later, I just want to know that it wasn't that we didn't want to hear what he had to say. We just can't have a discussion about something that's not, or act on it, or anything else when it's not on the agenda. So, and I didn't attend anything, but tomorrow I do.
Right, we haven't had too many things to attend lately. I didn't either. Uh, Dr. Valaria.
Just real quick, if you didn't notice, behind you is the Blue Bu- Boo Blast artwork. I know, it's a tongue twister, that comes down and gets judged, and t-shirts get designed using one of the designs, which is the one directly behind Victoria's head. So, I appreciate Chris doing this and his teachers doing it, and I, again, the PTA for putting on such an amazing event for, for their students. And it's been a busy time, and will continue to be busy as we get into the season here. Just thank staff and all of our teachers. We had a busy week last week, on top of everything else, with professional development and our staff, elementary staff doing their conferences, so.
Thank you. So, I just, again, wanted to commend our high school science team for the work that they put into, not only the study session, but I think they undersold the amount of time and effort they've put into really changing their instructional practice. You know, when you think of the way science used to be, very siloed, and, you know, you take one subject at a time, and no one ever really kind of tells you how it all comes together, and that's really what they're trying to do. So, they are really spending a lot of time and, and energy to make it accessible to all kids. The other thing I wanted to mention is that we'll be launching our ALCAP thought exchange next week, and hopefully, the survey at the same time or shortly thereafter. And so, we look forward to getting our stakeholder input, including our, our student voice as part of that, in the development of our new three-year ALCAP.
Consent calendar items, 10A through M.
Sumit.
I have seconds?
Any, any, Peggy, did you have a question?
I did not. I was making sure, can you hear me when I don't press the button if I just say second?
I can, I just don't know that I'm recording or anything else.
Okay, so I'll try and just press the button. Okay.
Student vote?
Yes.
Board members, on favor?
Aye.
Close, carry 401. We have two information items tonight. The first is item 11, report on California school dashboard and local indicators. Ms. Vincent, is Dr. Mayberry?
Yes, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Mayberry to present this item.
Thank you.
This is a report that, as a district, all districts in California give this report on our local indicators to the, to the California Department of Education. There's actually two sets of indicators that we use. There's the state indicators, as you can see on this slide, that, that are data that we actually send up through our, our different information systems, our data systems, like Ares and Calpads, and then we have local indicators that meet those nine, or I'm sorry, eight state priorities. And so, this presentation's around those local indicators. We want to share that information with you. The report itself is much larger, but we wanted to share just a few key pieces to that. These local indicators have, they're a little bit different than the more database, state indicators have a category of met, not met, or not met for two years. So, we do a self-evaluation, and we look at different, a lot of survey results impact these, these indicators. These feed into the California dashboard, which has been, come out a few years ago. It's been evolving. This is our 2018, and as you can see, that has a mix of state and local indicators. The California Department of Ed continues to adjust these a little bit. If you, I'm going to go back one slide, but if you see, there's one up there under Access to Broad Course of Study called College and Career Indicator. That's an example. It's continued to evolve each year. They're adding different, um, different categories and different metrics to do that. So, similar to local, local indicators are similar in that, is that we continue to evolve on how we reflect around school climate, parent engagement, implementing state standards, and access to courses. So, I'm going to go through each of those here for a few minutes. This first one is around basic services. This is a category that relates to what has been a priority for the school board in this district for quite a while, around having high-quality teachers, having good facilities. So, we do a series of, you know, making surveys to make sure we have our instructional materials for all students, teachers are, and, and miss assignments, and the schools are in good repair. This continues to be 0% for all of those. The next indicator is implementing state academic standards. This is tied close to our ALCAP goals, around academ- our first goal around academic strength, as well as profess- high-quality professional development. This is mainly around the different areas, the main focus of this is around the areas that are implementing recently adopted state standards. And for us, our focus this year and next year is mainly around the, the next-generation science standards, which we saw earlier in the study session, and the work that the high school's doing on that. The elementary and middle school are looking at different resources. Although they've started to implement the standards, they're still looking at the resources that are aligned to those. And then, our social studies, which we adopted last year, they're now starting to use those on a more regular basis, the resources there. So, that's why those ones, that would be a three in there, but they're still in the beginning implementation phase. The next slide is related to parent engagement. On the right-hand side of this references all the different input that we did for last year's ALCAP. One of the things that we, we talked about, mentioned earlier is thought exchange. That is something new that we added last year, is a different way to get input from the community, from parents, from students, that we've been finding very valuable. And then, on the left-hand side, this is from a survey last year around, to parents, around what were effective, our ALCAP survey around being effective with local businesses and community partners, apparent education opportunities and parent input. Those continued numbers continue to be around the 80% mark, and then with 10%, we're still working to, to meet their needs. School climate was a series, a whole series of questions we asked related to this. These are ones around, that we've definitely been focusing around students feeling safe, staff caring about students, students having a connection with at least one adult on campus. We've been, this has been definitely a high priority with our social-emotional work. We've been doing, as long, along with the school climate work. These certainly are in a good spot, but they're ones that we continue to work on and reflect on. These are, these are the types of questions that will continue to be in our surveys year after year. And then, this, one of the last ones here is that access to broad... And then this, one of the last ones here is the access to broad course of study. This is really about students having, not only having access to a range of electives, and we've talked about before, challenging rigorous courses, but something that was mentioned in the NGS's study session earlier, was about students having access to just your regular classes, right? So you, whether, whether it's a science class, whether it's an algebra two class, or whether it's an English eleven class, that students at all different levels access it in different ways. And so a lot of that is around the instruction that we're doing, that's, that's referencing some of the earlier goals, the professional development that's connected to that, so that students are able to access the whole range of courses, not just electives. And that's a quick summary of the local indicators as we measure. Questions? Yes. There's a lot more that is not even there.
Right. It's like the science standards manual, right?
Yes, right.
On thought exchange, when you get thought exchange, does it also show you the date, the timer date that someone adds a thought? So if someone jumps into this, you know, to the exchange near the end, so there's not any feedback or, do you guys see that? Or not?
I don't, I don't think it indicates that, no. I could check on that and see.
Because I just thought about that, like we said, oh, that somebody's coming out. And I thought, well, the thoughts, anyone who responds quickly, right?
We, we try to send reminders so that people can go back in and do the ratings. Because if you're one of the early folks who share a thought, you might not ever, you know, come back to it without a prompt or a reminder. So we try to send reminders so that, that people go back in and see what new thoughts there are so that they can write them.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Sarah, did you have a report for us?
Just doing a quick School Power report on where we are today, date. We had dodgeball last week on Wednesday. That was over three hundred and eighty players on fifty teams, which is a big event, as you can imagine. So the most important part of dodgeball is really bringing the community together, and that is our goal. It is also a fundraiser. It's one of our smaller fundraisers. We did raise about thirteen thousand, just over thirteen thousand, putting it on par with last year, which is great news. Our wave of giving, as you know, is on, is on right now. We are on track, really kind of neck and neck where we, where we were at this time last year, which helps me sleep at night. We do have a big match happening tomorrow, so you'll see a twenty-five thousand dollar anonymous match from a generous community member. We'll be working all day to hit that match with our trustees, making calls tomorrow night. We'll be on the radio station doing some other pushes around that. The other thing that's in the works is a few changes to our teacher grant process. So we've been doing some exploration. We are likely going to be moving forward the grant process so that it will be opening up sooner, as soon as next week or the week after. We'll be speaking to staff meetings in early November. And really the goal of getting all of the grants in, looked at, evaluated, using our same evaluation criteria that we've used, and then giving parents a chance to view and/or directly fund the grants at the dinner dance. So that's kind of an exciting new change we're going to try. It's really going to depend on which grants we receive as to how that process takes place in February. So I'll continue to update you on that. Really the biggest change right now is just opening up that grant window sooner and closing it a little sooner. We have surveyed a number of teachers who've participated in our grant program in the past, gotten some great feedback through a survey from probably, probably close to twenty teachers now, just to ensure that we, but this change isn't going to deter those teachers from submitting grants. Just we do want to be thoughtful about changes that we make. So it looks like we have some great buy-in and excitement from teachers as well.
Thanks, Sarah.
Can I quickly comment on Sarah really quickly? I just wanted to congratulate you, second year of leadership, but also the willingness of your organization to reflect on the practices, to evolve and change and adapt, and also engage younger families, new people all the time. I, I just wanted to compliment, it's a really job well done, and you as the leader set a really good example.
Thank you. Yeah, we have some really excellent participation from our younger, our trustees with younger children in the elementary schools and just seeing that momentum build and really being concerned about wanting people to feel really confident about getting involved and investing not only money but time into their kids' educational experience.
And you did get all the pictures up?
Those dodgeball pictures? Yep, got them up quick.
Thank you. All right, we have our next information item, item twelve, monthly financial update, September, and report on other post-employment benefits, OPEB.
I, I can talk over the white noise. Thank you, President Vickers. This is the monthly financial report for the month ending September thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. Your revenues and expenditures are tracking as expected, very close to what we experienced last year at this time. When you look at page four of twenty-one, the projected fund balances, the end fund balance has not changed. And to date, we've still only done the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar transfer from general fund to the cafeteria fund, fund thirteen. One of the areas that we're wanting to do with this monthly financial update, because a lot of the information's in the report itself, is to highlight specific areas to share with the school board and the community, as we did last time with Cal STIRS and Cal PERS, talked about the pension liability. Want to continue that discussion tonight and focus in on the other post-employment benefit liability, because that falls in line with retirements. And we figure it's a complicated process and understanding, but it's something that we could share tonight. So if there are no questions on the monthly financials, I'd like to jump into that presentation. So what is other post-employment benefits? You'll hear the term OPEB quite a bit. Essentially, it's benefits that are provided to retirees of state and local governments that are outside of pensions. So typically, over ninety, well over ninety percent of ours at least, is medical and dental benefits that we provide for retirees up to the age of sixty-five. In rare cases, there's only a handful of employees in our system that have the life insurance benefit. It's also noted on the slide. And when you hear the term OPEB liability, the simplest version of what the OPEB liability is, is that they look at all of our current employees and retirees and calculate what would the liability be over time? It's not just a single year, but over time associated with those benefits that we're offering. An actuarial study is required every two years. We're in the draft phase of our second actuarial now, and we'll be reporting that sometime later this year. But currently, we follow the pay-as-you-go model, which means we budget in our general fund the expense related to our OPEB in current year. So last year, the total payments that we made for OPEB on behalf of the employees was about a hundred and five thousand dollars, just to give some perspective on what that, that cost is every year for us. How is the OPEB liability determined? There are several factors, and that's what you'll see in the actuarial report. And I guess the, to summarize, I won't read every one of these bullet points, but it looks at trends related to benefit costs, retirement rates, even demographics, and analyzes projections over time. So when we looked at that, our latest actuarial study, which looked at our total liability, was about three point one million dollars, and that was as of, ending June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen. Now, very happy to report, the board took action back in two thousand fifteen, almost one year ago, or not one, almost four years ago today. And we created a trust using Cal PERS. It's a program that, even though it's PERS, it applies to certificated as well, it's just a trust to cover the district. And as of June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, the value of that trust is a little over three point three million. So we're over a hundred percent funded. That will be reflected in the actuarial report. That number will, the liability will change because they're always looking at new employees and turnover rates and everything like that. But it's very good, and it's very rare for a school district to be fully funded for the OPEB liabilities. So thank you for your support on that, and I think that was a great thing to do for our district. And what this is going to mean is that eventually, we're going to be able to take disbursements out of that trust and no longer have to pay the, what was a hundred and five thousand out of general fund for our OPEB costs each year. So when would we start taking disbursements? This is subjective, however, I, I believe what we want to do is build that trust up enough so that the prior year earnings cover the full cost of the next year's OPEB liability payments. That way, we're not touching the principal of the trust, and it will continue to grow. And it's something that will permanently relieve the general fund of that cost. With that, I'd be happy to take any questions related to OPEB. Every two years? You do a roll forward every year to get a general idea, but the official study is done every two years? Yes.
Should ask if there's any public comment on this report? Board members, questions, comments?
Just a comment, I really appreciate you breaking down these issues in kind of informational items. So really thank you for that, because it gives a clear understanding to each of us. Thanks.
I agree. I mean, you read it, you read, okay, you know, hey, what is that? So it's like, it's like giving us a lesson, which is really important.
I want to say thank you as well. And then also, I do have a question on page one oh one. Because, you know, I love your top ten revenues and your top ten expenditures, I just can't. But on the last one, where it says fee for non-residential students, that was a revenue of nine thousand, maybe nine thousand seven six?
Foreign exchange students.
Oh, that's for foreign students? Oh, thank you.
So if there's other topics that you're interested in, just let us know. You know, I think for some topics, we think that you might want to have more information, but there may be topics that we don't think of that are related to the financial statement that we could do little monthly updates for. So please feel free to share and let us know if there's something. For example, the one Dr. Kelly had mentioned, the STIRS, who was kind of interested to know more about that. So we tied it into a monthly financial, so we'll continue to do that. So if you don't come up with a topic, we'll continue to come up with topics, but it would be helpful to know as well, so.
Thank you.
Any other, any other questions or comments? Thank you. We have some action items tonight. Action item thirteen, approval of resolution number nineteen dash ten, support for dyslexia awareness month. Ms. Winston?
Thank you. So with October being Dyslexia Awareness Month, I wanted to let you know that this resolution impacts, recognizes the significant impact that dyslexia can have on academic achievement, and really emphasizes our commitment to serving all students. As you know, in two thousand seventeen, California Department of Education released the California Dyslexia Guidelines, and we convened a work group that has worked over, we're in the fourth year of the implementation plan of that work group. And it's really focused on four key areas, screening, assessment, instruction, and training. And so, I'm sorry, we're in the third year of the implementation of that plan, and we want to continue this focus. So with that, we're recommending that you approve this resolution in support of Dyslexia Awareness Month.
Any public comment on this resolution? Any board questions?
I guess this is for Mr. Morrison. I remember you talking about some kind of special glasses that showed what it was like to have dyslexia. Did, how have we used those?
I, do you have the answer?
Sure, if you can.
It was, it was millions of dollars to create that, so it never got created.
Oh, so we don't have those, we don't use those?
No.
Okay.
He was actually trying to figure out a way to create them and fundraise, which would get people to pay for it.
Ah.
The cost of grand.
Oh, okay. I understand why we don't have those, thank you.
The intent was to try to find a way to have an experience.
Right.
And unfortunately, when you try to program VR, it is very, very costly. And we found that out as we started to engage different folks in this conversation. They were saying, well, we could build it at a cost, you know, between, you know, five hundred thousand to over a million. That, you know, our eyeballs got real big, and we said, well, thank you very much, we'll come up with a different idea, so.
Okay, thanks. My other question was, do we teach other students about dyslexia? Not pointing anybody out, but, you know, students always wonder why somebody's leaving the classroom. I mean, is there explanations about this doesn't, you know, some students leave, it doesn't mean that they're less intelligent or they're not paying attention, but how do we handle all that?
Well, I think it's part of our, you know, character education. Like you said, we don't call it out. We don't say the student's leaving the classroom because they have dyslexia and they need support. We know that everybody needs something different. And with, you know, the growth mindset work that's been happening at the elementary schools has been really focused on, you know, helping all students recognize their strengths and, and, you know, not necessarily seeing their areas of growth as weaknesses, but really, just I haven't been able to do that yet. So having all, all students have that mindset, I think it's more natural that, you know, I mean, kids come and go for all different reasons, in and out of the classroom. And, and so that's, I think, how we would, how we approach it.
It, so we, students aren't taught about dyslexia specifically or anything else. I mean, I'm just thinking, my nephew has dyslexia, and he has just gone through feeling, of course, like he's stupid, and he's not, and that the other kids think he's stupid. And how, thinking, you know, there are a lot of other kids like that, how?
So we haven't done it.
Kids make up their own stories about why kids are late.
So we haven't done a kids-specific, you know, I think the topics of respectability month, bringing in different speakers, has been related to a variety of different challenges that people face in life. And so you have, we've had staff talk about, you know, having stuttering problems. We have had staff and/or people brought in who are deaf, blind. So I, I think it gets an opportunity for us to have a speaker that talks to our entire student body about that. And we may already have, but if we haven't, I'm sure it's one that we can probably bring on to our, to our students and have them, you know, hear and learn about what it's like. Because that's the goal, is to have kids understand and experience, and not have another student, you know, say, well, he is, or she's dyslexic, but really talking to them on a much broader level, you know, from someone who's experiencing, what does that mean? And have, and because that's the value, what we saw when we did our study session in the last year was having that experience of, you know, what does it, what does it look like when, you know, for someone who might be dyslexic? And obviously, that was an oversimplification, but it was, was the intent, was to try to explain that to students, so.
And empathy building is actually part of our SEL curriculum, so it's built into the curriculum.
I can see how that would be really helpful for dyslexic students to have a speaker older come in and talk about that. Okay, thank you.
Any discussion?
Thank you for bringing this forward.
Yeah, we're going to put an article out tomorrow as well. Hopefully, I got to cut it down a little bit, I think it's a little longer than we want, but there's so much that we've done, so it's hard to want to cut it, cut it down too much, but.
I don't remember when the presentation we had here, was it, was it last year's?
Mm-hmm.
Because we really, we did emphasize that with increased trainings and.
The Warren Gillingham work, and, yeah, which is continuing, so.
But I do think that, I think that Lisa has a significant point about the, with the growth mindset and that not there yet, that what I see evolving, and without a lot of direct contact, but just what, it seems that there's a lot more comfort with who you are, and that because everyone has strengths, and that it's, rather than labeling things, I mean, but I'm not, there would be so, I don't know how we would teach it, per se, to students, other than just the idea of understanding that people have strengths, and then they have things they struggle with, and everybody has those. So I, I think we've made a lot of growth in that, in that direction, which will then, the underlying part for students is that they just feel it's not that someone has this and no one else has it, because we all can find something that we can improve on, and we may need more support than others, but it's, uh, it's things you can't see. And then you can tell when somebody's putting in a good year, you know, to.
Well, that's.
For, versus the dyslexia, which you can't see. And I think that, I, I, having a child with dyslexia and being dyslexic, I think the school district from when we started to where we are now, in thirteen years, the growth is amazing in this area, amazing of the people who participate in that growth. And I know at the top of the world, first and, you know, through and, and from my own personal experience, just in that growth and the understanding of it, and it makes me so proud that, that this is here, though, because it's saying how important it is to that child in their personal struggle, right? And that they know they're not getting it. And what I loved about what Mike was trying to do with the glasses was so that teachers could put them on.
And what I loved about what Mike was trying to do with the glasses was so that teachers could put them on and experience word become pixels or running away or flipping upside down or whatever that might be because everyone's, well, not, not different, there's different ways to experience it. There's thirty-six different ways, but they know better than I, we're kind of now, but the ways of experiencing it. And so you've got a mix of them. And so the fact that he was trying to come up with this way, that teachers could put it on and understand, and so the greatest conversations I had with our teachers was just ask the student how it affects them. Because it affects them differently and, and that really helps you think, oh yeah, I didn't think about it, I could just ask them because I think we're all waiting for, for the glasses, right? And so they've been asking, so as far as I know, like the teachers have really been asking the students, they have, like, how did it affect you? And what can I do to support it? So, and sometimes it is in the classroom, right? And sometimes it's not, like whatever, whatever that is, but sometimes it's putting something in listening. So I commend all of you for bringing it to the forefront and I like the fact that just in a sense of what it is for students, because they almost might see themselves in a lot of that too. But I'm going to, I think we should.
Clovis?
Clovis?
Yes.
Mrs. Vickers?
Yes.
Mrs. Wolf?
Yes.
Mrs. Perry?
Yes.
Mrs. Norman?
Yes.
Action item fourteen, approval of revised job description, administrative assistant, business services. And this is Mr. Collins?
No, this will be me, thank you. So as is our standard practice, when an employee sadly leaves us, Ms. Terry's retiring and I won't, Jeff can't talk about it. But we evaluate the job description before we replace a person. So we made some minor revisions to the job description just based on some of the operational things that happen in the office. So we're recommending those revisions to the job description tonight.
Thank you. Any public comment? Board questions?
So it seems like mainly the bus thing is not part of it anymore?
It, it will be, this person will be the backup for the bus system.
Somebody else has that.
Yes, but we're really making an effort to try to cross-train in a lot of areas so that we have a lead and a support, so that if someone shows up to get one, there's not anyone, you know, there's no one who knows how to do it.
Somebody else can help, great.
Any other questions? Motion please, so moved.
A second.
Any discussion?
I just want to say thanks for clarity and expressing the duty, so when a person comes in, they really know what they're expected to do. Which you've done with all of these. And will Mike be assuming that, well, I know this one's been in the works, but will Mr. Collins take over this?
He, Mr. Collins is responsible for this, just like the other directors are responsible. But just like.
And, you know, Dr. Mayberry or Dr. Keller brings something forward, so I'll, I'll share it with you and certainly if I needed to defer to him, I would do that.
No, I didn't mean that, I just thought this was still you.
No, he actually, he worked with Mr. Dixon on it. We, we put him right to work, yeah.
We just wanted to have Danny stand by.
It's down here at the bottom.
It has his name on it, down at the bottom.
We missed it.
Oh, I missed it, I love it. That's why I asked if he was presenting it.
He was happy to let Lisa present. Okay. Clovis?
Yes.
Thank you, board members, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed, carries four oh one. Action item fifteen, approval resolution number nineteen dash eleven, adopting and approving the associate membership agreement for LVUSD to join the Education Technology Joint Powers Authority, EDTEC JPA. Who's presenting this? Oh, Mike's presenting this.
Members of the board, thank you for considering this item. This is, one of the things that's hard as a small district is to negotiate contracts and get low prices. And so what this does, there are three founding members, Capo, Capstrano, Fullerton, and Irvine. And those represent a large number of students, obviously, plus with their associate members, they're over two hundred thousand that they represent. So what this does is they put out an RFP for a product, a software product usually, and they get pricing that is very competitive, very good. We don't have to use their pricing, but it allows us to look at their price list. They won't show me the price list until we join. So once we join, I'll, I'll let you know if the price is better than what I give, but I think it will be a good way to relook at everything we purchased because they've already gone through RFPs on a lot of those items, so it's, I think it's a positive thing for our district.
Thank you. Any public comment on this item? Board questions? I'd say, it also mentioned Clovis, so Clovis is.
Clovis is a member, yes. And that, that's what hits it over the two hundred thousand, I think, with Clovis, because they're quite big too.
So quick question, is there a downside?
I can't think of any downside to joining this, to be honest.
As I looked at it, but.
Yeah, I don't see anything that would be negative because we don't have to use it. We can, it's our choice and once we're a member, we get to see the pricing. We can request RFPs for future items, so we could, if there is something we're going to buy, we could have them consider putting out an RFP for it.
Your motion please, so moved.
A second.
Any discussion? Clovis?
Yes.
Board members? Yes, I guess we'll call, thank you.
Mrs. Vickers?
Yes.
Mrs. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Wolf?
Yes.
Mrs. Perry? Always need you.
Okay, we have our last item, board member requests for items for future meetings and board member requests for information. And you did see the clarification in the update, because I didn't do my job at the last meeting and so we didn't end up clarifying, there was a request from Member Kelly and also from Member Perry and we didn't get consensus. And when I looked at those again, I think basically starting at those with information first and if we have consensus on getting information. Do you have any guess, Member Kelly's when he's not here or wait till he's back? Wait till he's back, okay. So I know for Member Perry, there was information on the, was it EMFs in the rooms? And I don't know, Mr. Dixon didn't feel, there was.
Board member Norman had brought up the lights and.
But there was direction as far as what, we didn't get a feeling that there was consensus that we wanted you to investigate that or how, how would we look if you bring information back to us if there's? So we needed to do that.
Right, and all the lights are LED now.
Right. Okay, so is there consensus to let you decide what level of information we need as a starting point? Is that, is that enough clarification or do you?
Yes.
Okay. And the other was on wanting vaping in the curriculum? And I just, I don't know whether we even addressed that, because that's, that's what I saw in how that presented in the minutes. And so I don't know that we would.
In, in my notes, I saw it as that Member Perry asked for it to be shared with the community or with the public, the information that was in the update.
And that it might have maybe part of Dr. Keller when he shared social emotional learning.
Vaping recording requested be included in the social emotional learning, throughout this way.
Or somehow to the public.
So, but I mean, because I didn't follow up on that as far as consensus, it kind of left it hanging and so that was our purpose of doing this, is that we're not having direction given by any one board member and are also overwhelming staff with something that's, doesn't fit in at that time of year.
Well, we want to make sure what we provide is what you, what you ask for. So that's, that's really part of the question is, you know, to what degree are we responding and in what way and so.
So were you wondering if it is in the curriculum, just an answer to that question? Or, and then Lisa saying you wanted it shared with the community, that we are addressing it?
Yes.
So is that clear?
Mm-hmm, that helps.
Thank you, so we'll try to do better. So Clovis, do you have anything from the student perspective of, that you'd like for information on or future agenda items? Thank you. If you do, you can certainly bring it forward. Member Perry?
Just information on the LCAP, are, besides the thought exchange, are students going to be able to give input in other ways?
We're looking at, starting with the survey and the thought exchange and we do have students that will be on our LCAP advisory committee.
And will there be another chance for students that maybe aren't on that committee to give input?
That's the purpose of the thought exchange and the survey.
But only through the thought exchange?
And the survey, they're two separate. The survey is looking at school climate and LCAP, we've combined it this year, so it's, it's quite a robust survey in addition to the thought exchange. They'll be doing both.
Okay, thanks.
Member Wolf?
I wanted to get information because we're getting near a new calendar year about our meeting schedule and in my conversations with other board members in the county, it seems like it's standard fare to have one board meeting a month and then possible study sessions attached to it. So I'm interested in a few things and this is just informationally at first, whether we could analyze our calendar as possibly not conflicting with the city, possibly an idea of a meeting a month where more parents can come because there's one a month that we have. I really appreciate more students here tonight, so I would just like to look at how we land within the county of other school districts and how often they have meetings. I mean, I know people in Northern California, also on boards, that have one meeting a month and get their business done and then those extra meetings are scheduled for when it's needed or study sessions. So I would just like that information before we start planning out the year, so.
So if I provide it in a weekly, just generic, start looking at, and we've done this in the past where we've asked kind of what's going on within the county? To give you that information a weekly and then that would further your discussion at a future board meeting?
That would be great, information, thank you. Everyone okay with that?
Oh.
Okay, okay, thanks. Oh, and just last, thank you for the student reports, thank you for the added reports. I think it really brings to why we're here, we serve for students. And to have Lance and he all kind of choke up about a student experience, like that's why I'm here, that's why I serve, is for students and to expand their world and have all these great experiences. So kudos to having those here.
I was going to make a joke and say thank you for making Lance and us cry. I almost cried watching him, I almost cried, I was like, I'm going to cry with them, without the experience. But I really do appreciate having the students here and having their, oh, thank you, and having their, their voice on the board as well as having them come present. I also would like, Sandy Hook has a thing called Sandy Hook Promise and they have promise leaders and they actually just reached seven thousand one hundred promise leaders across the United States. And if my fellow members would agree, I'd really like for the schools to look at, I know we have the hello, you know, don't leave anyone isolated, we already do all these things that we've created that align with them, but they have other programs also tie into the curriculum. And as we continuously improve and evaluate, I'd love it if we looked at what Sandy Hook has already created that other schools are doing as well and see if it implements and makes sense as we look at stuff. Not create something new, not stop something we have, but if we're evaluating Second Step or something that we'd look at what Sandy Hook provides. And Sandy Hook is the promise to be preventative around not creating, to support people so that they feel connected to their school and connected to each other. And, and it's a very proactive, preventative program that ties into all the mental health, social emotional components and giving kids their toolbox of coping skills to deal with and having all the adults that they trust that they would work with. And we already do so much of it, I just, I think with safety issues coming up recently, I kind of, I already think we do so much of this, but I thought I'd rather just mention it here and let parents know they can sign up for the parent list and there's a student list. Students can sign up for, there's, there's actually a back-to-school checklist, right, for students and it's really about knowing the signs and, and making sure you reach out to someone, you tip and because often it's, there are warning signs that people are well aware of before someone hurts themselves or someone else and that's what it's all about, so. And it was, if there's consensus, I'd really like them to look at this.
To look at it and then share the information with us, is that?
Well, they could do that or just look at it within their, when they're reevaluating because the safety, they meet all regularly to build their safety plans, so.
And it might hit an area better than we're hitting, I mean, one program doesn't do it all.
Right.
So I can't see that it would be, I think it'd be great not hurt in any way.
Yeah, and one of the things that we are going to be doing as we kind of continue on is evaluating the different areas of things that we're doing, looking at scope and sequence related to our social emotional program and identifying gaps that we have and using different programs to do that. Because we realize, I think, you know, there is no one perfect program out there that hits everything and so, you know, Dr. Keller and, and our staff are going to be looking at some of the things that we have within Second Step even that we feel may need to be changed to become more robust and there might be opportunities for that. So I, I don't see why we couldn't look at that in conjunction with everything else we're looking at with, over the duration of this next year and into next fall. It's really our plan of really revamping and, and kind of bolstering now that staff have spent a little bit of time with Second Step, realizing, okay, what works, what doesn't work? And then again, filling in those gaps, so I, I, you know. I, we can report back on it probably much later as we kind of look at it and engage with it a little bit more as to where, you know, how it might fit in. But I appreciate the Sandy Hook Promise, I first met them down in, when I was in San Diego and very passionate people who are really out there to be proactive versus reactive. And I think that it aligns with a lot of the work that the board has allowed us to do, so.
And, and I think it separates, the nice part is it separates what's state, what's federal, what's local, what teaches, what we could do at our actual school sites, what we could do within our community. And so I just like the fact that it breaks them into pieces. Because I, you know, my one comment over the rounds found at Thurston is if those rounds were something from an automatic gun, they would have evacuated the school. There would have been a very different reaction versus something that you would shoot cans with, right? It's a different, having a round gun. So it's just a different reaction to that and I think that what I like about Sandy Hook is that if you're nervous, you're worried, you want to do something proactive, it has things both to support you in, in what you can do so that you can make a difference and not spend your time just being nervous. It's a horrible feeling.
Just one, I want to bring it to this level, trying to be, not ask it directly, but to, it's really a question for the high school and I would be interested if it's not too much trouble from knowing what students we have right now that participate athletically at college. There's a lot of programming they put on television and it would be something that I'd be interested in seeing students that have come through here if they're playing at a college level and I don't know if that, if they have that information, if it's, I don't want it to be a big task, but it's just.
We can, we can kind of dig around and see if there's consensus from the rest of the members to kind of spend a little bit of time looking on it.
It's an odd thing, but it's, but rather than just calling, rather than just calling up Lance and asking myself, I just felt like we're really trying to funnel things through, following our protocols and so it's.
Do you mean like having Lance look to see if there's something?
Well, he should, he would probably know, you know, there was, but it doesn't, just because they go to a school to play. I try to follow that myself, but I just, they don't always.
It's not an exact science because we have a hard enough time tracking exactly where they end up attending even at times for their regular college, college. So it could be, it'll be rough estimates, but we.
It's just, it's not, it's not urgent, it's not.
Yeah, we can put it, put it out there and see if that's okay with everybody else. Thank you.
I know just looking around, I saw one of our former students giving a TED Talk, which I thought was great. I mean, to just look at where some of, what wonderful things some of our former students are doing.
And I, and I think that also ties back in general to the connection to the adults on campus and the connection to the school, that they also share that information. I know in UCLA campus, I've run into, you know, still become friends with high school students, but they're college students now, and to run into them is really interesting, it's really, and they're very excited about where they grew up in the school and they're very proud of it. And so I think building all of that in them, maybe they'll want to share.
And then another thing, it's also related to the high school, to ask Dr. Olman, because it, it's still, the cities, I, I, every so often I bring it up, I wish they would involve students more in city government. I know some cities do, I don't know, I don't research it to know which ones, but I've asked before when we have our joint meetings, but I was just thinking of it again tonight when our students come in and make these presentations and it just seems that they should, to me, I would, I don't know if there's student interest, that's what I would be asking of Dr. Olman, if there'd be student interest through the student senate or through the various programs that he set up, if he has students that would be interested in, you know, like making themselves known to the city. And what also brought it to mind is that a lot of these recent discussions with things that are going on in the city, there seems to be some representation saying that it's like the millennials.
there seems to be some representation saying that it's like the millennials who are going to, now they need to do things for them, because they, they've done it for the people that are now, I think it's like, sometimes I feel they want to cleanse the community of anyone over fifty. But they, they're not really looking at, like, our high school students. And when they come in here and present, they've got great ideas, and they're not including that part of our population. But I don't, I'm not directing that, I'm just, you know, if our students would have any interest in.
And I'll, I'll provide a little update on, on what's going on around that in the weekly, if that's okay? Because there's a lot of work going on.
Students might not have an interest in, I mean, it's not, they might not want to reach out to. I think they did put one student, I think it was on the Recreation Committee, when it came up another year.
Yeah, and it's not necessarily just committee work, it's presentations to the City Council, which we're seeing an increase in. And we will continue to see that, so I have some things I can write about to, to that extent, just in conversations with different teachers and. But I wouldn't want, it's not an agenda item to discuss tonight, so I can't go into detail right now, but I can, I'll be happy to provide it, and then we can do some follow-up on that as well.
So these are just informational?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I know that both.
Both Ligon and Nagel uses, you know, has a whole student program, and also Irvine. But they're bigger, so maybe they draw from more students.
And would you include in that, like, when they come speak to, when the council members come speak to, like, MUN or other groups? Would that be something you acknowledge of? I know they do that, I just don't know if you. Okay.
Thank you. We will have our closed session after our meeting tonight, with the study session before. So we have any public comment on our closed session agenda item, and that is public employee performance evaluation for superintendent of schools. So is there any public comment on that? Then I'd ask for a motion to adjourn to closed session.
So moved. Second.
On favor? Clohi?
Oh, sorry.
More members on favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Seven twelve.
Seven twelve.
Can we have a quick sound of the?
Sure.